Okay, good evening, everyone. I am going to call the June 12th, count a great planning board meeting to order. So first up is roll call. Melinda.
Present.
Jenya.
Present.
And Dan Cobb, I am also present, so we are at 100%. Next up is approval for minutes, approval of minutes. This would be for the May 8th, 2025 meeting. Did anyone have any comments or corrections?
No comments, no corrections.
I move approval of the minutes as circulated.
Sir, a second.
So motion to?
That's what, yeah.
She made a motion to approve, so we need a second.
So we just walked, right?
We need a second first.
Oh, I thought you said second.
Second, yes. Yeah, now I usually ask for a second. Okay, and no discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous, alright. Alright, information exchange, I saw a few things in the memo.
Ready for this end? So yeah, the June 10 election results, like since we don't have a council liaison, kind of just mentioned those that the town and the school budgets were both rejected, so you're probably looking at town meeting sometime this summer to look into the budget and getting one that will pass. And there are new counselors as well who were elected, all the results are on the town website, so just as a reminder, there are some changes there and...
So assuming at some point relatively soon they'll elect some liaisons and we'll have a new friend here?
Yes, yep, we'll have somebody as your new liaison.
So I have a question. The processing, Gray, is not to have another budget round that is voted on in ballots, but that it is passed in a town meeting style?
Yeah, it goes to a town meeting format. It happened a couple of years ago.
Okay.
When they, yeah, they're in the summer to get it done. The volunteer appreciation event, I know both of you attended, and we brought Dan's cooler bag tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Recognition guest from the town, that was a nice event. Some awards given out to folks in the community that have done a lot, so that was nice to see. I did go up to the Build Main Conference this last week, and there are some legislative updates. That's not, that session doesn't close yet, but there may be some changes to subdivision law coming down the pike, so if those do end up going into effect, that would affect your work, so I will keep you posted on any of that. And the, I don't know if any of you had followed, the Greater Portland Council of Governments did a presentation to the town council regarding housing and how where in the ordinances, zoning and subdivision, the town council might be able to make changes to increase the availability of housing. So that was that presentation, and there's a housing study pending as well for the town through GP Cog to give the council some guidance on how to address that. And I just wanted to mention, I think for reappointment wise, I think it's just you, Dan, who are this year, if you are hopefully willing to stay with us.
Yep.
It doesn't really be reappointed enough as a council.
I recently got my letter and have not done anything with it yet, but I know they'll need to take care of it before that meeting, so I'll do my homework.
That's it for me.
Yep, okay. I did not have any information. Anybody else have anything?
Just one thing, I assume both of you check your emails and see them, but I stopped getting access to mine and I successfully re-engaged, the system changed, so just making sure that everyone's, I was, I guess, the late one, so.
To the email, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we're all good on town email?
Cool.
Okay.
Is that something in the past couple of days or more?
I think in the past few weeks.
Okay.
It changed and I just got it sorted in the last week.
Gotcha.
I had to come in.
Alright, Jenya, anything?
Nope.
Alright, for information exchange then. Okay, first up is continued business. So this one is a request by SE Development represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers for Planning Board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create a three-lot subdivision on the 17.21 plus or minus acre parcel at 30 Campbell Shore Road at tax map 56, lot 17-19-02, in the Rural Residential Agricultural Zoning District and the Shoreland Zoning Stream Protection District. This proposal is subject to Shoreland zoning, a zoning board of appeals decision, and to major subdivision review. Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is JP Callen, I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers, and I'm here representing SE Development LLC. First of all, Chairman Cobb, I hope you stay on the board, we have several more projects and I'd like to keep the board together as much as I can, so...
I mean, there's no promise that I'm...
No, I understand. No promise I'll be here either tomorrow, you know, so. But as an aside, we thoroughly enjoy working with staff here and Gray and Planning Board as well. I think we've made some good projects together and commend you for your service and your volunteering, anyways.
I'll echo that for staff, they're great with us and I know they're very helpful to all the applicants, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. It's the truth. So anyways, we're revisiting Campbell Shore subdivision. It's going to be renamed Maple Leaf subdivision. We're going to lose the Maple Leaf Drive. It's not accepted, so we've got a couple of other names that are proposed. And, but subdivision name for permitting processes that have already started, we're gonna keep and retain. So I think I'd just really briefly like to go through a couple of updates on the plan that things have changed since we last saw you. And then I only have three items within, between the consulting engineers review and the staff comments that I'd like to talk about. I believe I have all the other concerns well underhand or well in hand, if not already addressed, so. Anyways, I'll try to be as brief as I can. So before you have a plan showing the revised subdivision, I've got a, in rendering for color, the light green is the proposed landscaped lawn area. There's a darker green on the edge of the light green color. That is area that was previously proposed as landscaped area that we've lost in the ZBA process.
Can I call a timeout quickly? Can we get one of the monitors facing us?
Ah, yes.
This one is not, doesn't have that on there.
Either one's fine. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine, this works.
So anyways, the darker green is the wooded area. There's a area of darker green here and here and a little bit over here. Those areas are, were previously landscaped areas, they are now going to be wooded. Going through the ZBA process, we've pulled as much of the tree clearing out of the shore land zone as possible. We have less, we had about 2,000 square feet of yard slope disturbance within the shore land previously. We're now down to under 500, I think it's 491. I think that will be a betterment to the neighbors as well. To achieve that, lot three, the one at the very top, had to slide further west and northwest. But aside from that, the project remains as you had it before. We've adjusted the grading accordingly to adjust the tree line. And the bioretention area between lots one and two, in this general area, was revised not only to accommodate the changes we made for ZBA, but also to address some peer review engineer comments. So that's all I have for changes to the plan. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask, or start some discussion about things that I need for the next steps, unless you have questions that you'd like to ask me in the meantime.
Any questions at this point?
Nope.
Okay. I have one question, you can address it now or whenever, but just if you could remind us the buffering that you're doing anywhere? Any additional planting?
Any additional planting? So we've gone back and forth on that a little bit, trying to figure out and develop an idea of how to accommodate that as best we can. I'm gonna go to the grading plan to show essentially, so where we have the ideal area that we could landscape along this tree line? Right now I've got a berm for stormwater. Now, if we were to install additional landscaping, we discussed arborvitae's in the past, don't really think this is a good location for arborvitae's. We're not opposed to supplementing some of the forest with additional like trees that are out there. I think that would be more successful. Arborvitae's need a pretty good amount of light, they make sense in front yards where we, you know, want more privacy fencing. Side yards, if there's a big space between neighbors where they can get a lot of light, that are also a favorite of deer. So putting at the back along the tree line may not achieve what we want ultimately. So similar to what we did at Lieutenant's Drive, Jenny Drive, where we provided some plantings within the woods in areas that were thin, I think that would be a better approach here. As you know, this site has been harvested fairly recently, past six to 10 years, something to that effect. There's a lot of slash out there. I have a feeling that one of the things we're proposing is that we're gonna remove a lot of the slash from areas where the trees are to remain and for our permits with DEP and Army Corps. In doing that, I'm hoping that we can identify some areas that need supplemental planting and create the space for them, as well as allow the existing understory to kind of grow up and take over and just naturally fill in. I've been out to the site many times, I've taken photos from the new building envelopes and especially this spring and right now, visibility is very limited. I can only see the house at the front of, that's just directly to the south of us on Campbell Shore Road, from lot one's single-family house, from the duplexes, you can't see it. So I think personally, we would be willing to clear additional trees, fill them in with arborvitae's if that comes to it, but whatever direction we decide, the plan that we're decides is the most efficient way to do this, I'd be agreeable to, so.
Okay, I think we can give feedback on that now? I can start, which I totally agree with pretty much everything. You said I would not put arborvitae in the woods and the deer are gonna eat them, so I'd find something that is more fitting to be in the wooded area. And as I remember with Lieutenant Drive, we sort of, we didn't pre-plan.
Correct.
Right? We sort of had an allotment of trees and then there's some post-work with staff to, if I remember right, I might not be remembering, right?
We had an allotment of trees and then I believe the neighbor and the contractor developed a plant, planting plan together. I don't know if code enforcement or staff was involved in, and I don't even know if it's been done, to be honest with you, but...
We have a rough that project.
Yeah.
I would say something along those lines, makes sense.
Yep.
Agreed.
Okay. Yeah, I think that makes sense too, because we can revisit it once the tree clearing's done.
Right.
And identify, so I think I'm open to a condition of, you know, landscaping as necessary, as determined by code enforcement, planning staff, something to that effect, so.
Okay, sounds good. So let's pass through the staff comments then?
Sure.
So you agree with everything except for what we're gonna talk about right now?
I don't have any disagreements with any of staff comments, okay? So item number one's been addressed, it's revised note 20 on our subdivision plan. The one, the two items, really quickly, the three items I wanted to talk to you about tonight were the open space, the road section, and the performance guarantee.
Which number is the road section?
Road section is from...
Which number in the memo?
Yeah, it's from Groll Palmer's memo, and it's, I believe, item one under roadway.
There it is. Okay, and what was the other one?
The, so the open space fee, road section, and then not on the memo is the performance guarantee. So those are the topics I'd like to talk about tonight. Like I said, I have no issues with any of the comments or concerns from the staff or peer review. We've addressed all of them, I'm prepared to make a resumme immediately. So anyways, I think the first one in the road section, on our detail sheet, let me try to blow this up for you. We had proposed a widened shoulder section of, is there any chance we can get the detail or my screen brought up? Thank you. So the roadway section for the private or public rural easement street is 18 feet of roadway with two-foot shoulders each side. We had talked about providing a section that would accommodate pedestrians better, and so what we've done is we've widened one side of the shoulder and so that shoulder is now two feet of gravel and an extra foot of glass landscaped area that's flat for pedestrian access. The peer review would like this to be better formed. They essentially are looking for a raised section there, like a raised sidewalk. So the problem we have with accommodating that is essentially impacts to natural resources. We get into a lot more impact if we have to extend that road section further. So I'm hoping that with the widened road section, we accommodate the access that we had talked about in the past, but I do need planning board's feedback on that. So if you're looking for...
We don't have that section.
Really?
At least, or I keep missing it.
Yeah.
It's in detail sheet two, so I believe it is on, is that seven of eight?
No, we don't have that one. We don't have sheet two.
And sheet seven of eight?
Oh, okay, you were zoomed in on it.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Top left.
Got it.
So the top left section is the road section with curbing. That's the first 300 and some odd feet of the road. The curb section is there to get stormwater to our basins so we meet our treatment requirements. We're treating nearly 100% of the impervious area on this site, as well as better than the 80% developed area. Really good success with stormwater on this one. And then the section that I, in question is the section below it without curbing. It's stated just typical roadway section. So the right side of that is the widened area, so essentially we have three feet from the paved roadway to the slope, top of slope that we're essentially dedicating as walking area.
Excuse me.
I just have to clarify a question.
Yeah, sure, go for it.
So I'm looking at that now, so two feet of it is gravel and then one foot of it is grass?
Correct.
And then it slopes down from there?
Yep. What we can do is we can adjust the slopes for the roadside swale. We only have two road or driveway culverts. The three to one slope helps us to get the culverts in a better location. If we go flatter, we have to deep dive the swale down and meander the swale around the road. But we can take and meander the swale where we don't have the culverts in between the driveways and flatten that slope to something like four to one, five to one. Three to one would have to remain basically within five to 10 feet of the driveway connections to work for us, but it would, that I know I can do based on the grading for the yards. The front yards are relatively flat for all the spaces, all three lots.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the two sections. What would you think about making, forget about the walking path, but make the entire road 20 feet? Because you go down from 20 to 18, but then we're adding more shoulder, does that work or not work?
So if I understand you correctly, basically widen the roadway to 20 feet, so nine-foot travel lanes either side, and then leave...
Well, you have, well, I guess, so the first part of your road is 10-foot travel lanes with curbing?
Yep.
So it's 20 feet wide?
Yep. If we were to maintain that 20...
What if you maintained that width but it didn't do the curbing? I don't know that we need a path, I mean, as long as there's room for people to walk.
Yeah, so I don't think, I think that's open to consideration. I think I would encourage my client to consider it. The reason why we decided to go with the 10 and 10-foot section on the curbed portion of the road is just because the road was elevated, the curb was really close, you know?
Right.
18 feet of curb-to-curb width passing a car is tight. If we have pedestrians, it gets even tighter, so that's why we went with the wider road section. It'd be additional cost in terms of, you know, the pavement for the project, but I think if we could gain that foot back...
Right, that foot back.
Then I have a little bit more ability to make the yards and the driveways nice. So I think that, you know, there's a cost benefit there for us too, so I'd encourage it. I'll definitely talk to my client about it, you know, outside of this meeting, it's something we definitely would consider.
What does the board think? I was just trying to simplify, like you're going from a, I'll call it wide road with curbs to something narrower, and then there's like an offset on one side, you just got gravel and grass, so...
It's just, it really isn't, the transition we're having, you would all, you really wouldn't notice it, quite frankly, because when we, after you have a curb, the curb we're gonna use is about an eight-foot or eight-inch molding, because it's like, it's a firm curb, rather than six inches. So we're essentially, we're eight inches difference, so four inches on each side would be the difference in the travel lane from the top of curb. So I don't think there's a big deal with the transition, but I think what it would allow for, like you said, is just a wider paved area. You know, the road's designed to handle 25 units, up to 25, you know, dwelling units, we only have seven. I have a feeling that generally these subdivisions like this, they're not gonna see a lot of traffic. People are gonna be walking on the road, you know, just keep their feet wet rather than walking in the grass anyways.
In the winter, they're only gonna walk on pavement anyways, so...
So I mean, I'm not gonna sell it as a yes tonight, but I'll definitely consider it, and if that's what you'd like us to do and consider, well, I'm open to it.
I'll just have one.
Yeah, sure.
One question. Is the gravel area considered impervious in the same way that the pavement? So it's not really, that would be my only pause around paving it, is does it hurt the shoreline at all or the water, but it sounds like it wouldn't, because you're...
No, we've already treated it, so we're actually, I'm gonna leave my basins as they are, I'm going to lose a foot of impervious surface, because I go from a 20-foot section, that's impervious, to 22 with the gravel, so...
So that's, 22 is the same difference.
Yeah, so I'm losing two feet of impervious surface for 800 or 400 feet of road, you know?
You can also go from pavement to grass.
Yeah.
Instead of pavement to gravel.
Right.
Yeah, if you're open to let us to get rid of the shoulder, that would help offset the cost too, so, great.
Jenya, what do you think about that?
Oh, I think it's a good idea. I really don't see any reason for the gravel, two feet of gravel.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's part of the ordinance road section, it's a requirement, but I mean, I think we're above and beyond already what we need for this project. We could go with our smaller road section, but we're gonna pave it anyways, so we figured we'd accommodate future development here as well, if there is any. So we decided, I mean, we just didn't like the 16-foot wide road for these units anyways. We were going to do 18 at least, gravel ends up being 20 of paved. I think we're, I think it's essentially a balance for us.
So it sounds like the consensus is we'd like to see the 20 paved and then not have the three-foot walking path that's two-thirds gravel and one-third grass, right?
Yep.
Well, I have one question. What is the plan with the mailboxes? Is that one place where all the mailboxes will be situated, or it will be mailbox for each unit?
Oh, you're asking for the road purpose?
The thing is, like, if they, like, each unit will have a mailbox, there is very little reason that anyone will be walking to the common area to pick up their mail. You know what I'm saying? And people usually don't walk anyway, like, people usually drive, pick up their mail.
Well, you could have kids walking the school bus.
Right.
At the end of the road, people walking, walking paths, it's more than just mail.
Yeah.
So I guess it may be worth having a little discussion about that, because it's, that is a comment. So we envisioned either a gang mailbox in the area where the fire cistern is, there's going to be ample area there, it will be flat, we'll have a pull-off, it'll be grassed, but you could pull off and drive in that area. The other location for it would be actually at the, out here at the intersection of Campbell Shore. The gang mailbox location we will always propose, but ultimately it's up to the post office to locate. Since it's a private road, they usually don't provide mail service to the individual units, they go to one location. But we don't have a lot of control over that.
So my comment there would be put it in the subdivision?
Yep.
And one of the main reasons being is that people tend to pull up to those things opposite traffic. I live right near one and they do it every night. They pull to the wrong side of the road, their headlights are facing oncoming traffic and they're getting their mail out of the box, so I don't think that's...
I'm envisioning that ours is gonna be recessed, you know, 12 to 16 feet off the road within the easement for the cistern.
Okay.
And essentially, people can pull off the pavement, they'll still be on a flat area.
It needs to be not on the main road, though.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I don't think the post office would generally prefer to pull in and have it right there. They don't like staging and sitting there and loading those boxes up when they're on a main road, especially something like Campbell Shore, so we will show it within the stormwater easement, or excuse me, cistern easement and propose it there, so we're 100, 300 feet into the project site.
Sounds good. Alright, I think we're good on the road. Performance guarantee?
Yeah, so with this project, we'd like to exercise option C of the type of guarantee. Yeah, so with this project, we'd like to exercise option C of the type of guarantee. So chapter 401, 11.1 allows us to do a conditional agreement. There's restrictions put on lot sales or building permits and things of that nature. We kind of would like to use that option to help keep the cost down during construction. I have a feeling this performance guarantee is going to be in place for several years. So I think we'll be... It'd be great if we could get two units constructed this year with timing of outside permits and everything else. So I think we're looking at a two-plus-year construction process. So anything we can do to reduce the amount of the performance guarantee would be excellent. And essentially, the client would be agreeable to not selling any of these lots until the project is completely done. And no occupancy permits, no building permits, those sort of restrictions we're open to.
Kristen, I think I'll defer to you on that one to get us started.
Yeah, typically we look to the board, to authorize staff to work through the performance guarantee details with the applicant.
I'm not finding that in our memo, what he was referencing.
No, it's not. This is something that I think I need to bring it. It has to be, it's a condition. So it goes on the plan. And since we're coming back to you for final plan, hopefully in the very near future, I wanted to get it on your radar rather than come back and introduce something new at final.
I don't know if we have enough information tonight to...
But it's something we can deal with at final.
Yep.
Because that's when like guarantees would need to be in place at that point, like before release.
I have a clarifying question. So is the plan, because these are a combination of single-family and duplex? Is the plan to sell the lots? Like, I'm trying to see. Lot two has two duplexes, so you'd sell each lot separately and then build when you sold? Or like, when you say have it fully built out, but you don't mean the buildings? You just mean the road and all of the other improvements?
Yeah, no lot sales until the project's done, essentially.
I see.
Buildings would be done, yards done, everything functioning, road, stormwater. That is a, you know, it creates a hardship for the client to recoup some of his costs for construction, but it allows them to not have the burden of carrying a performance guarantee for several years and paying a bonding company, you know, a bond of $100,000 versus erosion control inspections of $10,000, $15,000, that sort of thing.
So I'm not, I don't think I'm asking my question correctly. So the intention of this developer would not be to hold, build and hold these and rent them, but to sell the lot and build two duplexes so that there would be a different owner maybe of each lot that would have the, you know, duplexes and manage them. However, maybe they live in one and they sell the other or whatever they do.
I think the, I mean, based on conversations I have with the client, you can correct me if I'm wrong, his intent is to keep these essentially for as long as he can. But the project is very expensive. And so there may be a situation where road construction, building construction, everything comes to a point where he needs to have capital by selling a lot. It may generate the money that he needs to cover expenses to continue and finish the project. But with this agreement, if we would enter this agreement, he could not sell this or any of these lots, either as condos or as a whole lot, without basically completing the whole project, getting sign-off from the town and every, like, the performance guarantee being released, is my understanding.
Do you want the exact language? No, 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 no. I just want, I was trying to match that up with my understanding of the plans. Like, how is that going to even work? If they kept them all, like, that's not going to really make him any money if he's planning to sell it. But now that, so it's to give him the flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, there's not much we can give you here tonight, I don't think.
No, I just, I wanted to introduce it to you tonight so that it was, it wasn't a surprise.
Okay.
And when we're coming in to clean up the last bits of things and having to get into, well, I had no idea, kind of conversations, I don't know anything about this, give you the opportunity to think about it, maybe review the section of the ordinance if you choose. And we could have a further conversation at final and be okay with that. I think there is language in that, that basically staff has to decide what is applicable to performance guarantee, maybe more than just erosion control and inspections. But we could do that, too, you know, as we go through final.
Okay.
So that's all I have. So if there's any other questions for me...
You have open space.
Oh, yes.
My...
Thank you for reminding me. That was the first one I wanted to talk about.
My hope is that you're going to tell us you're going to show the required 5% on the plan.
We're not. I mean, I really don't have a great location that's accessible from the road that would meet the 5% for the entire development. The entire development measures 181,000 square feet of total land occupied by buildings, landscaping, road. The total property is 17.2 acres. I'm not quite sure whether the 5% applies to the development itself or the entire property. Either way, it's a significant amount of land that we'd have to dedicate. We were hoping that we could use the fire easement area, maybe expand that, but it's too big to fill that area. There's not enough upland area to provide.
So you don't have to clear all of your open space?
Yeah, I don't think we have the opportunity to provide that much space, period, on a lot. Whether it's 5%, if we do, it just impacts, I think it can't be on its own, it has to be on its own lot. So lot one, we can't put it there, which would be the ideal location right at the beginning, where we have the fire cistern. I don't think it can be in an easement. I think it has to be open space on its own lot. So the only place that we have remaining right now is the retained land off of the northwest side of the road. So it would be in that area. And quite frankly, very wet. And there aren't, the slopes aren't really great there. And I'd have to carve more wood out, or woods, to provide even a picnic table or something of that. Right now, my tree clearing is limited to my swales and the extent of the road construction on the northwest side. So we have the space.
Plenty of land above the stream.
Yeah, absolutely. But again, I really don't want to carve in to that, you know, 20,000 or 60,000 square feet, depending on how we look at it. That's a lot. So we would prefer the in-lu fee, quite frankly. You know, the community set up for the ranch dot homes, they're, we're trying to market these towards less mobile people in general.
So this is going to, that means you're asking to negotiate with us over a fee that there's very little precedent for?
Correct. I was not able to find like a defined payment in the fee schedule related to the in-lu of fee. So, yeah, it would be negotiation. The last one I saw, I believe, was $300. That was a long time ago.
It's not going to be $300.
It's a little bit of inflation, so 350. No, we understand. The land value is extensive. So what I was hoping for is ability to compare what the in-lu fee would be to loss of land.
So are you going to come to us with a proposal?
No, what we'd like to know the in-lu fee, I mean, the proposal is not to use open space and pay the in-lu fee right now.
And how much are you proposing to pay?
We haven't had that conversation, so I don't know. But again, if we were to lose an acre of developable land from this project for our future phases, you know, if they do come, that it's a significant loss. So we realize there is a value to this fee.
So if that's the road you want to go down, go ahead and make your proposal.
Okay. So our proposal...
I'd rather you didn't because it's going to be, I don't know how long we're going to be here negotiating it.
Okay, well, I mean, just things to consider. So we are providing a fire cistern, a fairly large one. There isn't any other fire infrastructure in the facility that I'm aware of. So this will be a benefit not only to the project itself, but the community in general. We are doing our best to address the butters' concerns all the way through this project. And we will continue to work with the butters if we hear more concerns. And so I would like you to take that into consideration. But at the same time, again, we understand the value of land and costs. So if you're asking us to come back with a in-lu fee proposal, come out, we can do that. And if it's a no thing, I'm basically just going to make the decision to go to the land. And we'll have that discussion outside of the meeting. So we keep moving forward and not have an hour debate. If that's okay.
Yeah, you can propose whatever you want. So that's fine. And we're open to consider whatever you want. I guess the point I was making is it will be a lot more straightforward to follow the ordinance, which is defined.
Totally understand.
That's my only point.
Yep.
You can make your proposal and we can consider it. And we're probably going to be here for more than an hour talking about it.
Well, I don't think we will, but...
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, we will see. But I think that's fine, and I'm agreeable to it. So we'll come back at final with the proposal at that point for you.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no other questions or concerns. So if there's any other questions for me or the project, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Anything else from the board?
Nope.
I would just reiterate that open space, even though, you know, if these folks are older, I'm kind of older myself, the benefits of open space are for everyone, not just people who are climbing mountains. And that's not what they would be doing here either. Open space has so many benefits for the environment, resiliency. There's a lot of reasons that the ordinance calls for it. And money doesn't replace the trees and the green space that's chewed up with lawn and pesticides, so, especially in the shoreline zone, so, or near the shoreline zone, so.
We, you know, I think you guys can attest to that. We've done our best to really ratchet in the tree clearing on this one a lot.
Yeah.
And I don't discount the need for open space. We do provide, or we'll have a community area, especially at the beginning where the gang mailbox is. I imagine we'll put some sort of seating feature there, picnic table or something else, because it's a nice, flat area. You know, it's got to be flat to accommodate the fire cisterns. So I think we can do something in terms of creating a community space. I just can't do the 5% that easily.
You're creative. I've seen your work.
I appreciate that.
All right. Yeah, I'm going to ask you to continue to think about that.
Sure.
Because I think it's just, it's a better route to go if we can. It's not like you need to clear, you don't have to clear a field because woods and trees and, you know, bird watching and other, it's not all about like, you know, field-type things.
Yeah, we understand.
I know the aim and the ordinance requests it be contiguous, but, you know, I think you know we're also flexible, so.
A couple comments?
Yeah, sure.
Just, there's a couple of notes for you to think about, maybe for JP as well, that I have some notes regarding this type. This is not a residential open space subdivision. This is the regular language regarding open space set aside, which is 5% of the area of the subdivision. So whatever you're considering included in the subdivision, you can count that whole land area and that's the 5%. The perimeter buffer can count toward the 5%. So if you were to show a perimeter buffer, like a no-clear, which you kind of already have already with the shoreline, that can count toward it. And the frontage, the road frontage, the 25 feet can be via easement. Not the open space itself, but the frontage can be via easement.
It can be an easement, okay. So access from another lot rather than direct to the road, right? Okay.
Right, so if you're able to kind of do a cut-through, it would need to be, you know, deeded, it would need to be on the face of the plan and deeded. So it's really clear to people like, hey, I can cut across your lawn to go access.
As long as, if it's not contingent or contiguous, then I have a lot more options. Providing open space within that community area in the cistern as well as, you know, like, the area that I calculate for my open space as a buffer around the perimeter may work for me. So hopefully I will get creative.
What we don't want to see is that you come back and use all the land that's not useful for building or walking through.
Sure.
That doesn't count, and I think you know that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So I think that approach is going to be a lot more productive than trying to negotiate the value back and forth. Don't really want to go there with no precedent and no guidance. We could be in for a slog on that one, depending what number you come back with.
You mean it just essentially a typical purchase and sale agreement routine? So, we understand. And I'm not trying to make light of it. We understand.
Right.
Just as another note, there is language in there that the fee can be for all or part of the open space requirement. So if you guys felt like you was meeting the great majority of that 5%, but couldn't quite get it to 5%, and you were comfortable with a smaller fee, that's an option in the language as well.
So just speaking for myself, I'd rather not get into negotiating fees at all, I think.
Just cleanest, just meet the 5%.
Yeah. I, you know, money's not supposed to be part of your discussion, I understand. So I know it puts you guys in a little harder position than normal, so we'll do our best to avoid that.
And if we do, you already alluded to it, land is valuable and...
Yeah, oh, no, we understand.
We know what 5% adds up to and...
Yeah.
You can do math and we can do math.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anything else from you?
No. Word of caution, we are experiencing a lot of scheduled delays from DEP. I really don't know when I'm going to be getting my DEP permits. Not that it's really germane, but I just wanted you to be aware that...
Yeah, so we've been flexible with people. And if you come back and you did your due diligence and didn't hear back, I don't anticipate that being a problem. We've never given anyone a problem as long as you're doing, you know, your best to get them moving.
Yeah, I agree. The Army Corps is kind of really the more critical permit for the project itself, for the stream crossing and the Watland crossings. You know, the DEP is just everything else. And so I am meeting with the Army Corps next week onsite. So I'm hoping that goes smoothly. I don't, what I'm trying to say is that I think we'll have everything worked out before we have DEP approval. So the design is, you know, hammered down, locked down. Going back to DEP, there really won't be much for them to change.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you want to consider a longer period? I know that we had done that prior with some preliminary plan approvals to give them an additional time window where they wouldn't have to come back for an extension of validity of preliminary, if they can't come back for final within the allotted time window? You want to address that now, or you just want to have them come back for extensions if needed?
Kind of indifferent, I don't...
I mean, what's most efficient for the agenda and for the staff? If there's an expectation, I mean, if they have their permit and they get what they need, then they could come back sooner.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I'm sure that they would want to, so.
It's more, if you're anticipating, then it's going to be longer than, I believe it's a six-month window or...
Yeah, I have no idea, to be honest with you. I mean, we've been working with them January and so...
So we can just stay in touch? And if you're looking like you're getting up against that and you're not ready to come back to the board?
Well, ideally, I'd like to go to final with, you know, just the submission of the permits to DEP. And so we continue, keep, girl Palmer's, I mean, I've addressed everything. I'd really like to flush those... and so we continue, keep, girl Palmer's, I mean, I've addressed everything, and while I like to flush those big pictures out, so I'm hoping to get preliminary approval this evening with the intent to submit for final immediately. Is that something that you consider?
Was not planning on it, based on it was open, but-
Yeah, without the five percent figured out, I don't know if preliminary is timely yet, is it? Seems like kind of a big nut to crack.
Well, I'm working on ten years old permit from DEP, I'm still waiting for a new one.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I'd rather see the open space figured out before we, I don't think you gain that much by getting preliminary tonight, it doesn't really-
No, we don't. No, no, we don't, I mean, like I said, the, the DEP's gonna be the critical path, so we can come back here many more times. Whatever you choose.
I'd rather see it more complete with-
Yep.
what your plan is there.
I, I would say, Mr. Chair, that when that gets sorted out and other things get sorted, you know, you reflect the change to the road profile, which is not a big deal. I would be open, at the time of preliminary, to give him more time between preliminary and final, like say, give a year instead of six months, rather than have to, have you come back to get an extension, just because it takes up a spot on the agenda and takes up time, if we're, we're gonna probably grant it anyway. So I'd be open to that if it-
Yeah, I think.
But not tonight, because I don't think it's time for-
I also think we wouldn't necessarily require anyone to attend, I think we had someone just submit a letter.
Oh, that works, yeah, oh, gotcha.
And it's just an extension due to delays outside of their control, we had a developer-
They don't have to come.
Basically, I had talked to Kristen offline, I said they don't need to come, just submit a letter and we'll vote on it.
Yeah, that's your call, yeah, if you don't need them here, okay.
Okay.
Good?
Yep, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thanks. I am going to just quickly open this to a public hearing, we've already had it, but I always like to offer any comments, if anyone has any, I don't think so, because I think it's only other applicants in the room, but don't see anyone in the room, anybody online? Okay, I will close the public hearing then. All right, we'll move on. Okay, next up is new business, this is Egypt Road Morgan Meadows Subdivision Sketch Plan. This is a request by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions for Planning Board Sketch Plan Review of a Proposal to Cool Two-Lot Minor Subdivision on the ten plus or minus acre Austin Family Trust property abutting the Town of Raymond line on Egypt Road at Tech's map six, Lot three zero eight dash two six two dash zero 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 in the Lake Zoning District. This proposal is subject to minor subdivision review. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil. We've had the pleasure of working with Habitat for Humanity for about twenty-five years, and we're here representing them this evening, as you've just explained, you basically summed up the entire project. So, given that it is sketch plan, in the interest of brevity, I'll, I'll keep it relatively brief, and then certainly answer any questions or address any comments that you might have. As you've stated, this is a sketch plan for a, essentially a two-lot subdivision, three lots in the overall property with remaining land, but we've got two house, two proposed house lots, on which Habitat for Humanity would build one small individual house on each lot, meeting all the zoning criteria for the town. Essentially, what I'd like to do is just call attention to your packets. Because this is a fairly small project, there's no engineering involved, there's no road, we're off of Egypt Road, by way of placement, we're looking at the, the overall lot that we're dealing with is about, it's on the Raymond Town Line, off of Egypt Road, which is about a quarter of a mile toward Raymond from Westwood Road. So it's, it's that end, basically, and then as you're heading out of town, these lots would be on the right-hand side. They're wooded right now, there's, there's nothing there, again, we're not proposing any additional infrastructure. The, there's no public well or water out, I mean, water or sewer out there, so it's private water and sewer. And we've been able to make a fairly comprehensive application set. Again, it's fairly brief, because there's not a whole lot to it, but you pretty much have everything that we've done in terms of the DOT site distances established with a report by a licensed main traffic engineer who coordinate with the DOT in terms of the clearing limits for the driveway. It can be met without any grading of Egypt Road, there is some cutting that's involved, but the DOT doesn't care about, well, I'm not gonna speak for the DOT, but they typically don't care about that, as long as we do it. They just don't want to pay for it. Once that's done, once it's paid for and the clearing is completed, and this is just ground vegetation, then they maintain it, they mow the, the sides, just like they do on any other DOT road. So we're all set, as far as that's concerned, and you have that report. We also have the Soil Scientist Report, the HHT two hundred, it shows where the passing septic systems are. We have, from the packets that you have before you, Kristen's handed out to you a, a couple of new eleven-by-seventeens that show some of the changes or the revisions to the plan that we've made pursuant to our staff's comments. What we've done to be able to shorten things up, as far as impact is concerned, environmental impact, is we previously had shown that the driveways would actually be further back into the property than they really need to be, to be well past the, the front setback, and because Habitat wants to be able to put, put their money, you know, as, as effectually as possible, putting in the longer driveways doesn't make any sense. So the benefit, the huge benefit there is that we're not impacting any wetlands as far as the driveway is concerned. In fact, there won't be any greater impact, or final impact to wetlands at all. There will be a short-term impact on one of the lots to be able to run a subgrade well line and a septic line. But once those lines are in the ground, then the temporary disturbance to the wetlands, which is less than a thousand square feet anyway, is going to be returned to that natural state as of today, which means it was a well and is a well and it's gonna be a well. So there won't be any impact as far as permanent driveways are concerned, and the houses will be up, you know, reasonably close to the road, but still needing to be beyond the front setback. The clearing limits are, as you see them, these are two-acre lots, but the clearing limits are right around the, the houses. Again, Habitat does not, and is not, does not want to, and is not in the habit of clearing extensive property or extensive land on properties, even though the, we do have two acres per, per unit. So what I'd like to do is, notwithstanding the other information that you've got in your packets, just run really quickly through Kristen, or through staff's comments. Confirming site distance, we have done that with the DOT, and you've got that licensed traffic engineer's report toward that end. There is no grading required for Egypt Road, so as far as any outside agency reviews, there is no DEP requirement, and there's no DOT requirement either. Number two, the applicant has a purchase and sale agreement, that is, they've had it for a while. It is coming close to expiring, but they've already extended it, you just don't have it yet. That will be part of your packet that they will show, or that we will show when we submit this next one for the next meeting that we come to. But that's not an issue as far as Habitat is concerned, or with the current owner of the property. We're no longer crossing the wetlands as far as Lot A regarding the driveway, to just explain that there will be a temporary impact regarding one of the lots, a well, well line, and the septic line, but that's it. And then that, that well and gets reverted back to the original well and. So there are no permits required from state agencies as far as this project is concerned. Kristen didn't mention that there is a small area of flood zone. I only mention that because I'd love you to take a look at that, the topography on that. I know we have to follow maps, but that flood zone goes forty feet up a hill. So just, it, it is what it is, it doesn't impact us anyway, it's at the very, very back of one of the lots, and it doesn't really make any difference to us whatsoever. It's just a little humorous when you take a look at these maps and the topography being what it is, there's, no ark's gonna float by before there's any impact as far as flooding is concerned, so that's not really an issue. The grades are shown on the plan, on the new plan, for each of the driveways. It is, meets minimum criteria for, for the grading for these driveways. There will be, you know, a little bit of excavation as far as the foundations are concerned, and for the driveways minimally, but it's no issue. As you can see by the topography, those are one-foot topocultures, there's not much involved in there. It's, it's basically just gravel driveways that are going into there. The well locations are shown on the new plan, the revised plan that you have, well locations for both properties, as well as the septic systems, and the exclusion zone, or exclusion lines. We didn't show those, we will show them eventually, we didn't show them now, because there's actually two locations on each site for the septic systems, and we're presuming that Habitat is gonna want to have the closer site. Why wouldn't they? Both sites meet the criteria, so the next time, we will show the exclusion zone where the well is well outside, no, well outside of the, the exclusion zone for the location of either one of those septics. But we will make sure that Habitat has selected the one that they want for the next time that we're here, and then we'll show that on the plan. Other than that, everything's on this new, this revised plan that you're just seeing. And you got, then the HHT two hundred report for the passing septic systems. Kristen did mention that there are some notes on the face of the plan that we needed to add from the original information that you have. We have added those notes to the plan that you have before you, the new one. I don't expect you to read those right now, this is not a voting situation anyway, but the notes are on the plan, and pursuant to what we've submitted, if staff does have any further comments, or if the board does, then we'll certainly address those as well. Fire protection is going to be individual, the houses are going to be sprinklered, and the sprinkler systems come from separate internal cistern systems, fire tanks basically, that are in the basements and the foundations of each one of the houses, and they do have, as is typically required, and we're doing it anyway, a separate line directly from the well, so those are automatically filled if there is any degradation of the water. If the water is used at all, they automatically fill right back up again, nobody has to turn a spigot to be able to do that. Monumentation is shown as pins, there are pins at the corners of, the four corners of this property. They were created, pins meaning cap rebar, they were actually set there for Habitat, or for inland, State Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. IFNW surrounds this property on all three sides, or all three other sides other than Egypt Road, with quite a number of acres around it, so as far as the monumentation is concerned, we're not, as surveyors, there's already a monument there, there's already a marker there, so we would, I'll get to the waiver request here in just a moment, but one of those will be, the granite monuments are not actually set at the corners, because we'd be replacing markers, permanent survey markers that are already set and are already called for in deeds from the state for IFNW, and replacing that when the deed history is already there gets a little legally tricky. If this were an internal, you know, points of curvature or whatever on an internal road or something to that effect, obviously, we would have no objection to that, but in this particular case, we're replacing a monument that's already there. And then finally, the, the net residential area and net density, they are shown on the plans that you have, both of them. These lots do meet the minimum criteria, all lots, as far as the, the development is concerned, so those NRA and NRP calculations are already on that plan that you see. Oh, I would like to be able to discuss a couple of waivers. This is not really a waiver request, I've got four items here, it's not really a waiver request, but because there's really no engineer, not really, there is no engineering involved in this, there's no road, there's really nothing, we would like to be able to request that the board consider that we get preliminary and final approvals at the next meeting, which for us would be in August. We're not quite prepared to make the final submission, which is in just a couple of days' time for the July meeting, but we will have plenty of time to be able to make that final submission for the August meeting, and given the very, very small size, two house lots, we'd like to consider preliminary and final at the same time. Now, I assume you want to have a public hearing at that point. If there is anything that comes of a public hearing that we need to address, obviously, we'd come back. But otherwise, if there isn't, we're very confident that we can get everything done relative to any comments or questions that you guys would have at that one meeting in August. So again, that's not really a waiver, it's just a consideration for you guys, if you would.
So we are willing to do preliminary and final, we've done it before, so that-
Great.
that's possible, but-
Great.
you obviously have to have your, everything buttoned up perfectly to do it.
Yep, and if it's not, then we'll go forward, but if it is, then that would work out fantastically, thank you. The, a specific waiver then for the granite monuments. Granite monuments are required typically, or requested at the corners of the overall development. In this case, IFNW actually had the survey from their property, or of their property that surrounds this, and the cap rebars are actually out there, so we would ask for a waiver of setting granite monuments at the overall corners of the development.
So I'll ask you a question on that one. So I see there's at least a common pin corner on the, the Raymond, I'll call it the Raymond line?
Yes.
And that's already there. What about your other internal, did you create these?
The internal pins are, are going to be cap rebar, there's not a requirement for the granites for those. The granites are typically required at the four corners of the overall land.
Yeah.
And that's the land that has already been pinned for IFNW. And you'll see those pins that are marked around the corners of the overall development, or the ten acres of land.
So this one comes up all the time, and nobody ever wants to put granite in, so I would just say, request your waiver and provide your justification as to why-
Great.
you can't do it at each location.
Okay.
Because sometimes we do, you know, we try and get them where we can, there's instances where there's stone walls, ledge, you know, you name it, why it doesn't make sense, but we do try and get granite where it's possible, and-
Understood.
if, if your justification is, it's already deeded and pinned and whatever, just put it in writing and we'll consider the, the waiver.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, and we'll take care of that, to be sure. The other one. Open space. We are requesting a waiver of the open space requirement. Wish I'd gone first before the other gentleman was here, but listen carefully to that. Essentially, what we're looking at here, and one of the reasons why we're asking, it, it, reasons are several-fold. The family trust that owns this property has indicated that as far as the overall, their overall land is concerned, they are selling to Habitat for Humanity these acreage, the two, the four acres, basically, that constitute the acreage that we are utilizing for the two lots. So they don't- This is the only land that they're going to make available. As I understand, and we have nothing against open space, as the surveyors were kind of into open space preservation anyway, but as far as preservation overall is concerned, I'd like to just point out a couple of things. Notwithstanding the owner's penchant to be able to not set aside any further open space in terms of it coming out of the net density of the lots, we are surrounded, or this property is entirely surrounded by, I don't know what the exact acreage is, but suffice it to say it's in three figures, as far as acreage is concerned, of IF, of state IFNW land all the way around us, which is preserved in perpetuity. The five percent that we'd be looking at, if we were to go, for instance, across the back line of these properties, you'd basically have a strip that's about twenty feet wide, that's it. And it would be immediately adjacent to the IFNW land. If we went down, straight down the middle of these lots, we're looking at a strip that's about six and a half to seven feet wide from front to back. When IFNW already has access points, both on the Raymond side and on the access road that you can see that's just to the right of this development, that goes back to the parking area for IFNW. So from a public access standpoint, IFNW lands are already open to the public. I would just argue that an extra twenty feet immediately adjacent to their property on the back edges of two-acre properties aren't really gonna add anything. And because the clearing limits are shown on this plan, and Habitat doesn't want to clear other properties, there's no reason to clear a property beyond where their houses are gonna go, all this back land, because the houses are generally, both houses are gonna go right up front, is gonna be left in its natural state anyway. Now, if the town doesn't mind, we could put that into an easement if you wish, but assuming that the easement would come out of the net density, then we would just say that this land is in perpetu- perpetuity, going to be kept in its natural state, and it's immediately abutting hundreds of acres of IFNW land. So we're not against it, we just don't know where we put it, and if we did put it anywhere, it's such a small area that it really doesn't add anything to the over a hundred acres of IFNW land that is surrounding us.
So I get your point. However, I'll go first. I am- I'm, we've never waived open space, and that's not a precedent that I'm willing to start. So I'd rather have you find a way to include it, is my initial take. And I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. I totally get what you're saying, but it's the idea of opening that up to the next person with the slightly less compelling argument than you. And then the next person with the slightly less compelling argument, as of now, we've never done it, so.
The...
And we just talked about, sorry, just to finish, we just talked about the perimeter buffer potentially fulfilling the need, so if you've already got it, and you can mark it as open space and it meets it, I'd rather go in that direction, but let's hear from the rest of the board.
If you're planning not to clear the back area, just mark it as open space and then you can, I mean, I, that can't, they can't do that?
Not unless, well, they have a minimum lot size, if they could still meet the minimum lot size, maybe they could.
Yeah, what is the minimum lot size, is it two acres?
Yeah, these are full, almost a full two acres, so maybe they could.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Maybe you could.
So if you're planning to leave it uncleared anyway, once these lots get sold, even though you're not going to clear it, there's nothing to stop them from clearing it unless it's designated in a way that prevents it, so the protection of open space has just all the benefits. And so if you, if you could just, I appreciate that you think it doesn't really matter, but it will, it will help us be consistent if we could just mark an open space on these and still meet your minimum lot size.
Okay.
Jenya?
All right, I'll do a second. Hi, my name's Troy, I'm with Northeast Civil. Just a quick question, so minimum lot size being 80,000 square feet, it's 5% of the minimum lot size?
No. 5% of the area of the subdivision. So if the subdivision includes that larger parcel that surrounds your two lots, which it appears to for your plan, then it's the total of, that total acreage, 5% of that total acreage. So I don't know what that comes to.
10 acres. So, all right, I'd be looking at 1/10 of an acre. Points, .7 net res is 56,000, so I would have to make, open space comes out of net res? Or not?
I don't think so, I would have to walk through that, because I think it's typically, NRA, NRD is typically considered first. Portions of a residential open space, I would have to read through that. I'm sorry, I don't know.
If the open space didn't come out of the net res, then I don't think it'd be an issue at all.
No, that's fine, we can make it virtually the entire.
So if it's, if it's easy to do, I think that's the route to go. I'll say, we don't want to make you do a lot of work to do something that doesn't make sense either, but I'd rather start from the place of meeting the ordinance, because we don't generally like to grant waivers. You know, you have to have a good reason for it, so if there's, if there's a reasonable way that you can meet it, we'd just rather see you go, go in that direction. Helps us be consistent, as Melinda said, and...
I will kind of modulate you, right? 10 acres is 40, would be 43,000 square feet is 10%. 5% is half of that, I think I have 56,000 extra in net res. Seems like it could work.
All right, well, let's start with that, and hopefully it's something that makes sense, it's not some, you know, completely useless strip or whatever, but, you know, I don't know, let's, let's start there and see what you come up with.
Okay, great. And then the final item I had is a, I guess it's not really a waiver, but it's a sidewalk. You're more than, well, we're more than willing to go out in a sidewalk if you want, but I'll tell you, there's nothing to see. It's a wooded, two lots with a road at the end of Egypt Road. If you want to go out, I mean, we're not staking out any internal road or anything like that, so it's just, if you want to drive by, feel free to do so, but otherwise.
Yeah, so I was going to offer it to the board, my feeling is we don't, there's nothing there to see unless, you know, there's not even really any wetland impact now or anything, so.
Is it the Morgan Meadow Wildlife Area that is, this is abutting?
That's correct.
I've tromped around in that myself, so I'm familiar with the area.
I mean, we're not really supposed to do our own investigative work.
No, 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 I'm not saying I haven't done it for this, I've just done it, like, I'm just familiar, I'm familiar with this area, I don't need to, a sidewalk.
My vote is that we do not need a sidewalk. Is there anyone that wants to have a sidewalk?
Nope.
Nope.
Kristen, do you see any need for us to be looking at anything there?
My only questions, I think, were with relation to the site distance, but you're not going to really be able to tell that all that well anyway.
Yeah, and it doesn't look like that's a challenging area, this isn't steep, it's a pretty flat road.
I think, I had had some ques, the reason I raised it in the memo is because I had some questions about the language that was submitted that made it sound like there may be concern based on that language that was submitted, so we can kick that around offline and make sure that's all very clear for the board.
Great.
I mean, they're going to have, they're going to have a PE that's going to stamp the site distance, so.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we need a sidewalk, unless something comes up at your next, you know.
Well, you can always let us know, that's your prerogative to be sure, it's just, like I said, there's really nothing to see out there.
Right.
Great, then that really concludes everything that we had for you.
So I'll just, thank you for walking through the staff comments, just process-wise, I'll let you know for next time that typically what our expectation is, is that we don't cover everything. The assumption is you either agree with staff and especially engineering and fire and safety comments. That's our expectation, if you don't, we only talk about the things that we need to talk about. So don't, you don't need to present on everything that you've already addressed, it just keeps things moving more quickly, but typically, anything raised by our consulting engineer, I can just tell you, based on history, the board's going to go with that and not, not waive something that the engineers advised us on, and similar for public safety as well.
Sure.
Staff, we're a little more comfortable, we go back and forth with staff comments, but.
Great, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Okay, one more. This is also new business and a public hearing. So this is Copus, Cappus? Cappice, Cappice Grove, what's that?
I said it was a new word to me when I heard it.
All right, I learned something tonight, what's it mean?
It is a cluster of trees that result from cutting a tree down that's used for firewood. Yep, good thing for Google.
I thought that was a copus. Cappice Grove Condominium Serenity Apartments Subdivision Amendment. This is a request by Serenity Apartments LLC represented by BH2M Engineering for Planning Board Review of an Amendment to the Approved Subdivision Plan for Serenity Apartments to become Cappice Grove Condominiums. The subdivision is a seven-unit multifamily development on a 9.98 acre property at tax map 21, lot 26-20-15, near 287 Mayall Road in the Business Development 1 and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision amendment review.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Austin Fagan, I'm here with BH2M representing Serenity Apartments LLC, that has stuck. This is the same project that you saw prior to now, with the intent of changing the name of the development, changing the name of the roadway, and going from an apartment complex to condominium units. The reason for this change, just based on costs that would be held throughout the life of the project, they're held as rental units. It exceeded what the applicant was looking for, and they'd prefer to just sell the units in order to recoup their investment faster. Relatively straightforward, and Kristen may able, may able, be able to present some additional information, but we would be looking for an extension to the date of recording the Serenity Apartments Plan, just based on us having done research to figure out if we were going to record that plan, if it was a moot point to do so, and so on. But be happy to take any questions the board may have at this time. Thank you.
No questions from me, it seems pretty straightforward what they're after, anything from the rest of the board?
Nope, I have no questions.
Just a point of clarification, we had put this plan approval extension request forward thinking that we might be able to not clog up the registry with the, it's a Serenity Apartments, one that you already approved. But our legal advice was you need to file that before you can amend it, otherwise they'd need to come back to you for a full-blown review all over again, because there'd be nothing to amend. So that one does need to be filed, I think, it sounds like you still want the, you're still seeking the extension just for timing purposes?
Yeah.
Because one of, one of the things that our attorney suggested was that perhaps they could be filed pretty much at the same time. So like, it could be done just before, at least Serenity Apartments could be filed just before, so that there's something to amend, and then they're really close to each other, you know, numbers-wise, and it's kind of obvious what happened, more so for someone looking back on this property in the future. So that was, that was the intent behind that, so it didn't come before you quite the way we thought it would, but it's still relevant.
I'm sorry, I'm a little, so we, do we still need an extension?
They are still requesting the extension.
Because they need the extension so that they can file the regular ones?
They don't have to have it, they could file it.
They could file it anytime.
Okay.
But if you grant the extension, it would give them the option to file them basically together.
Gotcha, okay.
See, I think at this point, the, the deadline for filing is coming up quickly, and where we've been trying to figure this all out, I believe that it would need to be recorded the day of or just prior to the next Planning Board meeting. So if we can at least get a small extension, I could have a plan prepared, brought to Kristen, so that it could be signed at the next meeting and not have to do any special trip.
I'll do a little straw poll, anyone have a problem with the 90-day extension?
No, no problem.
Okay. All right, we'll get to that later. Okay, do you have any issues with any of the staff comments outlined?
I do not. There were two comments that I'd just like to bring up, no disagreement with them whatsoever. Number four of the staff comments talks about how there are notably two rhododendrons listed in the key but not shown. Those two rhododendrons are shown at the center of the cul-de-sac on either side, and those would be, the dwarf Mugo pines would be in between those. So just wanted to call that out to make sure that we, we didn't omit anything. And additionally, provided them to Kristen prior to the start of the meeting, but we did provide cut sheets for the directionally, or directional lighting that was proposed for the garages. Exactly, yeah, so before, they were more of your standard floodlight, those are downward directional cutoff light, so we believe that has met the conditions of approval, so we should be good to go for the Serenity Plans being signed when the time does come.
Thank you for finding the rhododendrons for me.
Yes. I had to look for them too, so.
Okay. Before we get into our deliberations, I'll open it up to public hearing, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this application? There's nobody in the room, so that's an easy one. And don't see anyone online, so I will close the public hearing. Okay, so basically we've got staff comments, landscaping plan, and 90-day extensions. We've already agreed in principle to a 90-day extension. Does anyone have any comments on any of the staff comments? Or on the updated landscaping plan? Nope. Me either, okay. So I think we can start doing some voting.
All right, so.
So we need to find it complete first, and we can work on the extension. And then if we continue to get that far, we'd have a motion for approval of the change in format, essentially.
All right.
I've added.
Move to find the application by Serenity Apartments LLC complete per 401.7.1E for a proposal to amend the approved subdivision plan for Serenity Apartments to become Cappice Grove Condominiums. Subdivision is a seven-unit multifamily development on the 9.9 acre, 9.8 acre property at tax map 21, lot 26-20-15, near 287 Mayall Road, the Business Development-1 and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. The proposal is subject to major subdivision amendment review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Okay. Application is complete.
All right.
That's unanimous.
Motion next. Move to approve a request by Serenity Apartments LLC represented by BH2M Engineering for one 90-day extension of their final approved subdivision plan validity per subdivision ordinance 401.8.4B for the Serenity Apartments seven-unit multifamily development on the 9.9 acre property at tax map 21, lot 26-20-15, near 287 Mayall Road in the Business Development 1 and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Also unanimous, you got your 90-day extension.
Thank you.
Let's just take a minute here, I know there's at least one placeholder. So we didn't talk about driveway paving?
No, I think that may have been some language carryover in the, in the covenants from the first project. There, I don't believe there are any, there is any opposition to paving the whole project since it is one unified site.
And we, we are still waiting on the Declaration of Condominium, which I think that, that approach is probably going to address most of the comments that I, that I raised, because it will be a little bit more specific to condominium.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
So the conditions that are listed here, one through seven, should be part of the draft motion?
And six.
And six, including six, we're removing the reference to placeholder for six. Those all still apply, they would be sufficient to handle whatever changes need to be made to cover the condominiumization?
Yes, yeah, and the Declaration of Condominium will be part of, part of one of these motions is that it will be reviewed by the town attorney.
Okay.
Which is standard practice.
Okay.
That'll be one of the holdups for building permits, to make sure that language is done and filed with the registry and it's all ready to roll.
And your, what'd you call it, Declaration of Condominium?
Yes.
Is that the same thing that you're referring to in 7D, which is Final Bylaws and Covenants? Or is Declaration of Condominium a specific document?
You can add, you can, if you're more comfortable with that language.
I just wanted to make sure.
It might make sense to call it out explicitly, I believe it is a type of covenant language, but per.
If it's a specific document, I think we should call it out.
Yep, you can certainly add that to 7D.
What's it called, a condominium declaration?
He used it the other way around, Declaration of Condominium. I don't know what the, what the difference is, but.
Oh, those words, they matter.
They do matter.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would prefer to add that.
I will add it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, here we go. Move to approve the application by Serenity Apartments LLC for an amendment to the approved subdivision plan for Serenity Apartments to become Cappice Grove Condominiums. The subdivision is a seven-unit multifamily development on a 9.9 acre property at tax map 21, lot 26-20-15. map 21, lot 26-20-15, near 287 Mayall Road, in the Business Development One and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. Proposal subject to major subdivision amendment review and is subject to the following conditions listed in our memo. Conditions one through seven with the amendments, that condition number six, where it has a reference of placeholder, placeholder would be removed, and this number six is reflected. And the amendment to 7D, condition to read as follows. Submittal of final bylaws and covenants language, including a declaration of condominium, to be reviewed by the town attorney at applicant's expense and filed with the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? That's unanimous again.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Everyone's homework is to use the word Cappice in the sentence with your families and report back.
Well, I know one word, which is Calfice. It's just a milk-based drink, like in Japan.
Oh.
But, it's missing L.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
All in favor? All right, we will adjourn. Thanks, everyone, have a good evening.